To order roll call of aldermen.
Heisler, Consil, Meyer, Holt, Anderson, Rogerwood, Carpenter, Hart, Selsby, Hayden, Cybert, Martinson, Elmore, Schneider, Musgrove, Arland.
Alderman present, roll call of the department heads.
Please Chief Clay.
He is here.
Yes. Prior Chief Langson, Mike Flan, Ken Moan, Ross Carlyle, Jamie Maitre, Tim Gregowitz, Jim Schneider, Leander Spearman, Emily Foltz, Chuck Schaefer, Bob Sabo.
Chuck Schaefer is excused, ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand and join me to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your solid and faithful stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing we have this evening is I want to open a public hearing. I officially opened a public hearing in regarding of vacating an alley in reference to the new Lindenwood dorms. And I would ask the gentleman here, Rich, right?
Yes.
Mus-?
Musgrove.
Musgrove, yeah, I thought I had that right when I was going to... Jim is the engineering firm that Lindenwood has hired to represent him and work on this project for Lindenwood. And I'm going to give him the floor before we open the public hearing so that he can explain exactly what this request is tonight. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rich Musgrove, M-U-S-L-E-R, and I am the civil engineer on what we think is an exciting project for your city, and that is the construction of a new dormitory at Lindenwood University. I'm joined this evening by the project architect, Mr. Mike Ballman, and by the general contractor, Mr. Jeff Blanton of Blanton Construction. And if you all have questions that I can't answer, I'll call upon one of them to help me. Mr. Mayor, I did bring along a colored site plan to give the council an overview of what this project is all about, and I'll make some brief comments concerning it because it is pertinent to the alley vacation. We're at the southwest corner of South 23rd Street and West Washington Street. Our project area is 1.1 acres in size. It's the area that's colored on this display board. And this property is situated in the city's C2 heavy commercial zoning category. The property presently is used as a surface asphalt parking lot. We hope to build a two-story dormitory that's shown in the brick color on this board. It is 33,450 square feet total between the two stories, and it is to house 193 residents. Also, along with the building, we'll be constructing a service parking lot of 50 parking lots. Now, if I turn this over, Mr. Mayor, this one isn't colored, but same project area, same building, same parking lot. And I brought mine in red here. The alley that presently is platted was platted in 1904. And as you can see from how it lays out on our project site, it is in conflict with our building and parking lot. Now, we have surveyed the alley. There are no utilities located in this alley right now. Its only purpose is used by the Lindenwood students to get to and from the service parking lots that is presently there. We have appeared before your Streets and Graves Committee. That committee did review this request and has recommended that it be vacated. So we hope the council would accept the committee recommendation and act upon our request tonight. And I'd be happy to answer anybody.
Yes, listen, we just opened it up here if there is a question, just so the council knows. When Lindenwood first contacted me, many several months ago, first time, and they first mentioned that this alley, I first talked to staff. And staff, the police department, fire department, Royce, all of them, Tim, they all looked at it from their perspectives, and everybody said they didn't have any issues with us for said purpose. And there was nothing that we knew that was going to stop us. And I met with the Rich and other gentlemen from, ladies and gentlemen from Lindenwood, from their site team that's being put together, and we talked further. Is there any questions from the council members tonight? First from the council. Any questions from the audience? This is a public hearing at the moment dealing with the vacationing of an alley that is necessary for Lindenwood to build this two-story dorm, a girls' dorm which will house 190...
193.
193. Actually, there's Angela, Dr. Wingo. She knows, she's got a count for all of them. So this would be a great, great asset to Lindenwood's ongoing growth. Any questions from anybody in the audience? Rich, hearing done, no one has anything else. I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll take action on this during the city council meeting. Public hearing is closed. We will now go on with the regular part of this meeting. I will open public participation. I think I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to use my authority as the chair, and I'm going to go ahead and have the presentation on the character word, and Basic has asked that they be here tonight, and I'm going to ask Reverend Daryl Coons to come up, and then soon as they're done, we'll go back to public participation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just say, I come tonight just in the way of information for you. I don't want to feel like we're making enemies of anyone. We're not here to chastise anyone. But most of you are aware of what the Basic Initiative has stood for the last several years. We have stood for making Belleville a community of character, and that's been picked up all over the city. You drive down our roads and you see it on business signs, banks, schools. We've done a great job with that. What we haven't done a great job at is really, truly changing our community in some of the most basic ways. Last month, after the city council meeting, I received, as president of Basic, I received some phone calls from adults in our community who said, you know, we don't think it's a good idea for our high school students to be at the city council because there is too much incivility, not just up here. I'm not pointing fingers up here, but I'm also saying in the entire community. And the way that we address each other, which lacks respect. We have some young people from three different high schools who have learned to cooperate together to really make some significant things happen. And they've done that because of respecting each other. Now, when I grew up in high school, we hated the next high school over. I mean, we wouldn't date them, we wouldn't be seen with them. These kids like to get together and create goodwill because they respect each other and they listen to each other out of respect. I'd like to ask, as part of our Belleville Achieves Strength in Character movement, that all of us in Belleville learn to address each other with respect, to learn to listen to each other with respect, and to listen to these young people. After we talked about it, my first reaction was, that's it, we won't let the Basic Youth go back. They said, we want to go back because we think we can make a difference. I want to introduce Matt Son and Rebecca Rockwell.
The Basic Initiative developed out of Belleville's Community of Character Initiative. Belleville East and West High Schools and Altona Catholic have joined together to form a youth board. As members of the board, our role is to promote unity in the community and encourage citizens to rebuild character.
The character word of the month of March is perseverance. Staying with the task, not giving up.
I thank you for being here, for wanting to be here, and for helping guide us. It's very good. This time, we will now open public participation, and I will ask that as we speak, we use good character, I will call on you. You will come to the microphone, you will need to give your name and address, and try to keep your remarks to two to three minutes. We have a pretty full agenda, there's quite a few people here tonight, so obviously, there's a lot of questions, a lot of people watching what's going on on this agenda. So I will now open up public participation if anyone would like to speak. Yes, sir.
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Ave. It's coming my attention that the housing department is collecting names, relationship, birthdays, and Section 8 information when a person applies for occupancy permit. Orders number 7667 passed by this council on February 19th only allows for the collection of name and relationship. I would ask that the housing department immediately stop collecting the additional personal identifiable information and purge this information from the database. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Kevin Fields, I stay at 25 South 35th Street, Belleville. I just wanted to come and speak about Belleville, and I love Belleville, I grew up here my whole life, went to school here my whole life. And I believe that Belleville is a reflection of America, and not only America, but Illinois. And to show that 78% of America is white and 14% is black, but this is not a black and white issue, this is about education. And 86% of Illinois is high school graduates, and 30% of those people go on to get bachelor degrees. There's a paper that they have that's written that they say, 46 out of the jobs in America today are for people with bachelor degrees and above. So that means that 30% of the people in Illinois are only qualified for 2 out of 6 of the jobs that are out here. So this is why the economy is so bad. And we can go to a place like East St. Louis where it's 98% black and 1% white, which is a reflection of a black community in any place, like the black community in Belleville. Only 10% of the people are actually getting bachelor degrees. And when you come to a place like Belleville, the numbers are even lower when you look at the black population here in Belleville. So that means that those people are only qualified for 2 out of 6 jobs in the area, in the whole area. And the only jobs in Belleville are minimum wage jobs. There are no jobs for these people. These people need jobs. And not only that, the school, the reflection in the area, around this area in Belleville, they don't look out for the community. They took away the YMCA, and they charged overrated for the community. And not only that, they closed the pool, they took down all the public basketball court, so the kids had nowhere to go. If less, they go to the YMCA. So they have to pay to play basketball or to have fun. There's no place, no outlet in the community. So what we're asking for is to get more active in the community, put the focus back to what's going on in the community. Two months just passed in Belleville, January and February, and there was no notice given to any black, black people that have done anything in history. So I know that Belleville is a place where we're all about tradition. We have German Festival, October Festival, and we do a lot of things to reflect the community. But the black community has been given no reflection in Belleville, were treated as stacked and classed citizens. And we want more respect, and we want to have a chance to be accountable for what's going on in this town.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lillian Muni. I live at 201 North 28th Street in Belleville. You just touched upon the subject that I was going to talk about. We have all these parks, are there any basketball courts in any of the parks that these kids can go to?
Yes. You do, Mr. Mayor.
Because I've had a basketball backboard and hoop on my garage for over 35 years. And up until the last year and a half, I've had no problem. But all of a sudden, I've got kids coming to use my basketball hoop. Not one of them has knocked on my door to ask permission. Yesterday, I reached the end of my rope. Seven kids out there, five basketballs. I looked out the window and I thought, well, as long as they're just shooting baskets, I'm okay with it. But the next thing I know, they're throwing the baskets at each other, running through my yard, running in the street, in the neighbor's yard. That's it, the basketball hoop is coming down. I do think they need something to keep them busy. So I think you should put plenty of basketball courts in the parks.
We have some, yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Rose Wilson, 322 West I Street, Belleville, and I wasn't going to talk tonight, but I'd like to say something in defense of what people perceive as lack of activities for people. I live in a Franklin neighborhood, we had basketball hoops, we had a lot of things. And the only reason these things were removed is because of the fact that it wasn't that people played basketball, there was so much truck activity surrounding the hoops, and things got so bad, and it was a gathering place for mayhem rather than recreation. And that is why so many of the things were removed. Not because we tried to deny they used the activities, but because of the activities that took place, and there were so many people that didn't even live in Belleville that were part of the culprit. So in defense of Belleville, it was not removed to be mean or anything, it was removed because of the criminal elements that it attracted. So I'm sorry for the kids that are behaving, but this was by request of many, many neighbors, and it would go on until it was 3:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Jim Chatterton, 1440 Mulbash Avenue. Mine goes back to the electrical aggregation. When we put this through, wasn't it our idea that Home Field Energy, if Amron went down, Home Field Energy would go down and match them? But we got a letter through the mail, and I had actual questions to kind of familiarize with it, and says, what if Amron LMI rates decrease? And it says, if any time during the term and agreement, Amron LMI rates fall lower than Home Field Energy price, you'll have the option to return to your utility without penalty.
Yeah, that is a true statement there. I've not read, if I've got that letter in the last couple of days, I've not read it. And, you know, I just haven't gotten to the bottom of that.
So but it doesn't say anything about Home Field Energy is going to go down and match Amron?
What I would say is, if you'll call my office tomorrow, Jim, Aaron has been really dealing with the Amron representatives. We'll have a number that we can call to get an explanation for your question. If you call tomorrow, we'll try to guide that and get the exact answer and talk to them.
Because I know some people in my area.
Yeah, I understand. I just haven't, I just haven't read mine yet, so I didn't, I didn't catch it, okay? All right, thank you. Anybody else this evening? Hearing done, I'm going to close public participation. We're going to go into the regular part of the meeting. The regular part of the meeting minutes, the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February 19, 2013. What's your pleasure?
Your honor, I'd like to make motion to see file the meeting minutes from February 19, 2013. So move your honor.
We have a motion by Alderman Heisler, we have a second by Alderman Consil. Do you have any discussion? Yes, sir.
Page 3, 1, 2, 3, 4, this paragraph down. I don't believe that's the correct address.
What's this referring to? You gave your address as your business that you own and property.
Right.
When I ask, I ask, I guess, and the point being, I believe, is I ask for the name and your address, and we've always usually asked for your, where you live.
Smithon, Illinois. But I'm a taxpayer in Belleville, so I think that...
Okay, I understand that, Mr. Steinloggi, but I, well, is that one of the questions, Mr. Aiden?
Yes.
Okay.
Second question on page 13. Under Miss May's new business, Mayor explained to Alderman Hayden in response to his question of finance, etc., etc., etc. I'd like to insert between paragraph 1 and paragraph 2, Mr. Haynes stated, "The use of the term aggressive tip was to describe as the wager of property that lost value," which was my answer to you.
Is that acceptable, gentlemen, who made the motion? We will duly note that. In your next comment?
That's it.
That's it. So with those exceptions, we have a motion in a second to approve the main meeting minutes from the 19th of February. Is there any other comments or corrections? Hearing done, all in favor of accepting the minutes and having them filed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Claims payroll dispersments.
Yes, your honor, they had the claims payroll and dispersments repaid.
Motion by Alderman Anderson, second by Alderman Heisler. Do we hear discussion of the claims?
I'm sorry, sir, I forgot to check with Jamie. Can you explain the $72,000 to the St. Clair County Highway Department?
That was the money that we paid to the, is that referenced to the medians by Queen of Peace?
Yes.
It was an agreement we made here, you were probably here. We made the agreement to go partner with St. Clair County when we took out the crumpled crack medians there by Queen of Peace Church. That was our share of that project with St. Clair County. Is that correct, Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. Anybody else? Hearing done, we have a motion, we have a second to approve the claims payroll dispersments. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consil.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerwood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arland.
Aye. Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals Advisory reports.
There are 10 advisory reports, all but one, case number 7, has been recommended by unanimous vote by the council board. I propose to read the nine, except for number four is approved, and number two is rejected. Are there objections to this?
Hearing done. Proceed.
Case one, Donald J. Pollard requests a special use permit for a liquor license at 1021 West Main Street located in a C2 heavy commercial zone district. Case three, Jeff Clarkson, a request to rezone property at 2500, 2506, and 2512, Masculina Avenue from C4 Commercial District to Agro-Commercial District. Case number six, Catch 22, Little Bear, requesting a sign installation permit for an area of special control in order to place one flesh mounted sign, only 24 square feet, at 22 Masculina Avenue located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Case number 10, Max Convenience Store LLC doing business as Circle K 1347, requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at 1001 East Main Street located in a C2 heavy commercial zone district. Case 11, Max Convenience Store LLC doing business as Circle K, request a special use permit for a liquor license at 421 Southwest located in a C2 heavy commercial zone district. Case 12, Max Convenience Store doing business as Circle K, requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at 6001 West Main Street located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Case 13, Max Convenience Store doing business as Circle K, requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at 300 South Main Road located in a C2 heavy commercial district. And case 14, Lindenwood University requesting a special use permit in order to construct a dormitory and tenant improvements at 100, 104, 108, and 112 South 23rd Street, and 2214 and 2216 West Washington Street, all located in C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Case 15, Lindenwood University requesting an area bulk variance in order to permit a 15-foot front setback on South 23rd Street rather than the required 25-foot yard setback. The subject property is located at 100, 104, 108, and 112 South 23rd Street, and 2214 and 2216 West Washington Street, all located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district.
I ask for a motion to approve these nine zoning recommendations. Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Meyer. It's all of them that we just heard read, with the exception of number four on the agenda, which is case number seven, and we'll have a separate motion on that. Yes, sir.
And those looking at the unapproved minutes, cases eight and nine were not approved at And those looking at the unapproved minutes, cases eight and nine were not forwarded at all, so are there any reasons?
Sorry, cases eight, nine, what?
There was a case eight and nine that was discussed at night. It looked like all the cases that were discussed at night went forward.
Those are the ones that were, okay, Mrs. Emily?
Yeah, I received an email from the applicant on cases eight and nine, who requested those cases be heard at the March eighteenth council meeting rather than this meeting, so he did up some of the agenda and he's revised.
I think he had some problems being here tonight, and he wanted to be present, so that's why they were, he asked.
He wanted time to speak to more of the agents.
Okay, well, he asked Emily to postpone it, and I granted that permission when we did the agenda. So that's the reason there, okay?
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second to approve these zoning board recommendations. All in favor of the motion and have the proper arguments drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Robert, case number seven, Robert S. Gessgo, requesting a sign installation permit for area of special control in order to place one counted sign, total one hundred fifty-five square feet, at one thousand one East Main Street, located in a C two heavy commercial zoning district. This was forwarded to the county without a recommendation.
I'll make a motion to give the government a request and proper arguments drawn.
We have a motion by Alderman Meyer, do I hear a second? We have a second by Alderman Holt, do we have discussion through the council? Hearing none, all in favor of approving this case number seven, and have the proper arguments drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, moving on. This time we go to oral report, and I ask Alderman Anderson.
Yes, your honor, we asked Master Sewer, we have two motions, and I'm reading them.
Is there any objection? We read them together. Proceed.
A motion to approve the long-term control plant construction fee request, number thirty-two from forty, John, two oh eight, the merchantport zone bond, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. I got a motion to approve the temporary construction placement for material stockpile payment within Keller Construction and Harvest in Isolde.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Alderman Anderson, I give the second to Alderman Hayden. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I would like to publicly recognize the staff who planned for their excellent job of handling what could have cost us money and its bad one situation by taking the old concrete and it will be reused another day, so that we're saving this money, and I think they did an excellent job.
I agree with you, I think they did an excellent job. We note that, we agree. This time we have a motion, and we have a second to pay, to approve the two motions from Master Sewer. No further discussion, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert. Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. I ask for a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with Harmony School District one seventy-five and the City of Belleville Police Department for the physical safety and security of its facility as well as that of its employees, students, and visitors. Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Alderman Elmore, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Martinson, do I hear a discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
Call it.
Did you get an answer to the city's attorney's question as it relates to other schools?
As it relates to other schools? This is a request from this school.
The city attorney's saying we have to, my only question is whether there would be any expense incurred by the city, and if the city is prepared, they put the hand of the receipt on similar requests from other schools or school districts located within the city.
I think the answer to that is yes, or we quit. I mean, in many respects, Chief Clay, don't hesitate to jump in here, but as requested, you've been working with all the schools for some time. So I think they just wanted something, their school board wanted something kind of formal. If other ones want a similar type thing, we can, we'll select. Yeah, we've been working, we've been doing training, etc., with AM for a long time. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, yes, ma'am?
And this is triggered at the school's request.
This was triggered, to my knowledge, at the school's request. Yes, yes. We have a motion, we have a second. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, your honor. Your honor, at this time, I'd like to table the motion to approve the traffic committee request for a petition in order to ask for further feedback from the remaining council members besides the members of the traffic committee and staff, and bring it back to the March eighteen city council meeting. We'll have a further discussion on it on the March twelfth traffic committee meeting.
So that's a motion to table?
Table.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Hayden, discussion. All in favor of tabling the motion request by Alderman Heisler, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I got a motion here to approve the alley vacation to, and to approve the alley right-of-way vacation for Lindenwood Dorm.
So move.
Motion by Alderman Martinson, second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries, I ask for a motion to approve a license agreement between Amber and Illinois and the City of Belleville for the Signal Hill bike road. Motion by Alderman Hart, second by Alderman Carpenter, I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries, I ask for a motion to approve contract with Toki Branding and Design. The contract is placed in front of you, and let's first of all, I ask for a motion, then we'll have discussion. Motion by Alderman Mart, second by Alderman Consilla. Before I open up for questions, let me just say that, as you know, I think you're well-informed, that this initiative started with the Chamber of Commerce, probably what, a year ago? Good year ago. Chamber of Commerce invested thirty thousand dollars to hire Toki, they interviewed quite a few, several, brought it down to the top two or three, they selected. We had participated with them, staff, etc. They've been working with, doing an extensive research on branding the city, and by that, you know, getting feedback from people about how they perceive it all, how they view it. Now the next step is to do some branding things, and we're actually waiting on them as the people who've been involved with the website, possibly for a new logo, you know, everything from, you know, how you help market your city on some of that initial, initial first impression we made. So we're asking tonight, spelled out in here, to hire Toki, since they did all the work, and they really are off to a good start. We're really pleased, I think, the Chamber and city staff and the people who've been involved with the website so far, I think we believe this is the right step, and this would, would help them help us, so we can get the website to where it needs to be, and other, and other marketing things. So we have a, I guess the best way to say is a consistent message. Every time we do a piece and advertises Belleville, whether it be in a Scott Air Force Base magazine, or whether it be a, no matter what it is that we're Chamber, or Chamber periodically, whatever, to come across with consistent, strong, bold image of Belleville, and sometimes we've had some good, don't get me wrong, we've had some good things go out, but I think we're looking for a message, we all agree, and that's one thing the Chamber thought too, to have a consistent, stunning, hopefully, image goes out of our branding for the city. So that's kind of what this is all about, your questions. Yes, ma'am?
I don't know what we're asking on what the Chamber is paying for and what we're facing.
Chamber paid for the study, and Sharon, correct me if our Emily, Emily was on the committee, they paid for the initial study, and did a lot of, they did a lot of, they went to Arden Square, they went to all eight different places, and they surveyed people. Got a lot of surveying, some of you in this room may have been surveyed. They surveyed a lot of staff about, you know, perception and images and all kinds of things, and, you know, your tape on Belleville. Now they're down to creating for us the logo, the branding, the statements, the taglines, all those types of things, to help us go to the next level.
So how did the Chamber use that, or was it very, or was it just to pay for the study?
The Chamber was challenging us to get this thing out of the gate, and they paid for the first thirty thousand, which was the research, okay? I guess a fair way to say it, the research. When we took this on initially, we knew that there was more to come, and our goal is now is to, is to start the next step by allowing them with this contract to do the logo, and do the branding, and the colors, and the different things, to come back to us and bring us that stuff that's going to hopefully wow people, and also be a part of our webpage.
So do you see this then that will reprint letterhead?
Could definitely do that.
It will be on the web.
We'd want to see, because I'll give you an example. We had for a long time, some departments used one logo, other departments used another logo, there's inconsistency. This will eventually do us, and we'll have to phase it in, as it, we're not going to throw out old letterhead, that wouldn't be very smart, but as stuff comes, once we, once we get this new branding and logo accepted by the council, we'll then phase it in to all the departments, so we'll all have a unified look as we present Belleville, whether it be on literature, whether it be on business cards, whether it be on letterhead, whatever it is, we'll have a unified look.
Okay, and so how, is there any thought to, do we need to control them in any way? If you go someplace to get your own embroidered shirt, do I have to go to the same store to get my shirt ordered, or can I take it someplace?
I think we can control if the city's buying it. I don't think we can control it if, if an individual still wants to have an embroidered shirt that says Belleville, Illinois, and they want to show the fountain logo, and maybe that isn't the prominent, or maybe that, maybe it will be, maybe it won't be, part of the branding logo, but I think individually, but if we're going to spend city dollars, I think what we're hoping is that we will come up with an agreed upon, you know, if we're going to hire this firm to do this, that we would agree, and they, like I said, there was a number of firms that the Chamber interviewed, and I will say, I've been very impressed with Toki's work and their expertise.
Okay, and so I see between these, what I had my packet in this, that there's a different date on the bottom, is that the only difference between these two?
Sharon, we redid the date, right?
Yes, we did, and also we included the information about the right that we have either Toki or the city.
To exit the agreement within thirty days, we added that. Mike, I'm looking it over, thought we should have had that as an agreement. So that's the difference between what you originally saw, those two things, okay? Yes, sir.
I know, we're talking about the president logo of the fountain, your honor, I know that the city flag was done, obviously, back in nineteen sixty-four through a contest, the current vote, from my understanding, was done through a contest, it didn't, you know, five thousand dollars, but was there any thought to allow such a possible process?
There was a lot of discussion, but I think they believe that, you know, they do this, they've done it for the Jefferson Memorial, they've done it for a lot of big places throughout the country, a lot of universities, they've had a lot of experience, they sold us pretty, pretty strongly that they have the background, the representation, experience, and we could run a contest, but go back to being amateurs and judging it, however you select, I think that we felt that, and the Chamber of Commerce felt pretty strongly, that this is a professional group that's got a chance to help propel us forward, hopefully with a professional look as we try to grow our city, and that was the logic to it. Okay? So we have a motion, and we have a second to approve this contract, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
No.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider, no. Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries, communications. Mr. Turner, I'll let you.
We have four requests, they seem to be routine, may, is there any?
Any objection, read together?
I just have a question about the Wilkerson Chapel on that unit, I believe, I think that's never been a parade before.
No, they've never had a parade, but they've had a festival.
But I just, I mean, that's cool, I, I.
In regards to Cino, about the.
We have the blind box parade.
Very minimal, it's going to be very small.
I think they're wide on sidewalks, or?
Yeah, it's going to be, you remember the first St. Patrick's Day parade? I think we're probably pretty close to that. I don't think this could be much whatsoever, and this is a hundred and fortieth year this church has had a presence in Belleville, and I told them I thought we could work with them and bring it forward.
Oh, I definitely want to do that.
Yeah, but it is, they've assured me in talking to us that this is not a.
Lieutenant Longton.
And Lieutenant Longton looked at it.
Generally speaking, you have a lot of the reading, some of the other questions.
Are you willing to have them all read together, just a question? I guess that's what we were going to find.
Well, I'll take that.
Okay, read on.
Request from the Wilkerson Chapel African American Episcopal Church, asking permission to hold their one hundred and fortieth year church anniversary parade on Saturday, April sixth, two thousand thirteen, at twelve noon. B, requesting from the Greater Bellevue Chamber, asking permission to hold their first annual craft beer festival on Saturday, April twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at fifty-six hundred Belleville Crossing Street, from ten a.m. until eight p.m., and they are already gaining permission from Disco and other groups that would be concerned. C, request from Children's Home, and A, asking permission to host a five-k run walk and one-k family run on Saturday, August tenth, two thousand thirteen, starting at seven-thirty a.m., beginning at one-twenty East A Street. And last, request from Bellevue Area Human Society, asking to hold their Race for Rescues five-k and one-mile fun run to be held at Belleville West High School on Sunday, October sixth, two thousand thirteen, and asking to close Belleville West Parkway from French Top Parkway to Route fifteen from eight forty-five until ten fifteen a.m., and for a police officer to close the intersection from eight forty-five until nine forty-five. They're also asking for the use of barricades and bony cones from the street department.
You heard the full, yes, sir, question?
This is regarding the parade, is there any other churches that have parades in the City of Belleville on those streets?
Yeah, we've had some over the years, we haven't had one recently, we have had them, I mean, for many years, for a long time, we had the Catholic School Parade, they have since stopped it, but we've had parades, we've had, years ago, years ago, St. Paul's Church had a parade in their neighborhood, many years ago, I can reflect, so, I mean, there's been some, and this is to mark their hundred and fortieth anniversary, it's, they've never done it before, and I don't anticipate it's going to be an annual event.
I was just questioning, you know, between church and state, that was it.
I don't think there's a problem here. Do I hear a motion to approve these three, those A through D communications? Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a discussion? All in favor of these motions to approve these requests, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have petitions, we have none, resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-one twenty-nine. Motion by Alderman Selsby, I hear a second. Second by Alderman Consilla, I hear discussion, all in favor of approving, reading by title only, resolution thirty-one twenty-nine, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution thirty-one twenty-nine, a resolution of support for the City of Belleville program year two thousand thirteen, application for community development law grant. Motion to approve, application thirty-one twenty-nine.
Motion by Alderman Selsby, second by Alderman Consilla, to approve this resolution number thirty-one twenty-nine. Discussion? Yes, sir. Have we put together any projected projects for? Yes.
Kim, well, for this fiscal year, we have not yet, we have to do that.
Have we put together any projected projects for?
Yes, uh, Kim, well, for this fiscal year, we have not yet, we have to do that. We have a couple of projects that are gonna be carrying over, right?
Right.
That have been pending, that they're gonna be up, uh, on the agenda with.
Just for the new funding cycle.
You got some, you gotta finish Delight at Twenty-third Street, right?
Yes.
And we got, First Street is on the agenda, we're already working towards Mascooda Avenue in the, in the future, correct?
Yes.
And I guess the other one that we're proposing, that we're looking at, is what was the other one?
Uh, we're, we're still looking into it, looking at the cost, East Main?
Oh, we're looking at East Main Street, because there's no real pots there, we're kinda looking at what we might qualify, the curves that are so bad, I've been trying to figure out, but we haven't had the money in, in the, where we might be able to figure it out here, East Main Street, from I guess it's about the seven hundred block going up to ten hundred block approximately, don't hold me exactly here, and then also looking at Grand Avenue, uh, because it's got a lot of deterioration there, so that's another one that we're looking at.
Wasn't, uh, West Lincoln?
West Lincoln is on the agenda for, if you, when you get your TIF packet tonight, it's out of TIF, it's a bigger project, we don't have that money, H M C D G, it's a half a million dollar project, and it's in there for TIF this year, out of TIF three. Okay? We have a motion and we have a second, correct, this is field?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Conso.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Haynes.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martenson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, ordinance says, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance number seventy-six, sixty-four, seventy-six, seventy-two, seventy-six, seventy-three. Motion by Alderman Selsby, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Martenson, sir. Hold on a minute, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The A through J.
I wrote, I put a line here in my pen, but it was for something else. I, I also ask Mr. Dr. Selsby, if you listen, I'll read these and ask him if you will accept this to be added to your motion to read by title only, also ordinance number seventy-six, seventy-four, seventy-six, seventy-five, seventy-six, 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 seventy-seven, seventy-six, seventy-eight, seventy-six, seventy-nine, and seventy-six, eighty. You agree to accept that, and Mr. Martenson, Dave Martin, you don't read this? We have a motion and a second to approve reading by title only, those ordinances as we've just read. All in favor of, uh, reading those by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, I apologize, you understand. Mr. Turner.
A through J, may these be read and those all be approved.
Anybody have a problem with reading them, I'm calling, proceed.
Ordinance number seventy-six, sixty-four, this is an ordinance vacate in an alley east of, or Lindenwood dorm. Ordinance seventy-six, seventy-two, and ordinance regarding, uh, case number fourteen, Lindenwood University, requesting a special use permit in order to construct a dorm and, and improvements at one hundred, one oh four, one oh eight, and one twelve South Twenty-third Street, and twenty-two fourteen and twenty-two sixteen West Lincoln Street, all located in the C two heavy commercial zoning district. Ordinance number seventy-six, seventy-four, this is, uh, an ordinance regarding case number one, uh, Donald J. Harworth, requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at ten twenty-one West Main Street, located in the C two heavy commercial district. Ordinance seventy-six, seventy-five, an ordinance regarding case number three, Jeff Blesinger, requesting to rezone the property at twenty-five hundred, twenty-five oh six, and twenty-five twelve Mascooda Avenue, from C two commercial district to agricultural district. Uh, ordinance seventy-six, seventy-six, a zoning ordinance regarding case number six, uh, Louis Habera, requesting the sign installation for our area of special control, in order to place one flush pound sign totaling, uh, twenty-four and five ten square feet at twenty-two Mascooda Avenue, located in the C two heavy commercial zoning district. Ordinance seventy-six, seventy-seven, a zoning ordinance regarding case number ten, Max Convenience Store, uh, doing business, uh, Circle K, requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at, uh, one thousand one East Main Street, located in the C two heavy commercial district. Ordinance number seventy-six, seventy-eight, a zoning ordinance requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at four twenty-one Southwest, South Bell West, located in the C two commercial zoning district. And, uh, ordinance seventy-six, seventy-nine, a zoning ordinance regarding case number twelve, Max Convenience Store, uh, doing business, uh, Circle K, uh, requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at sixty oh one West Main Street, located in the C two heavy commercial zoning district. And ordinance seventy-six, eighty, a zoning ordinance regarding case number thirteen, Max Convenience Store, uh, doing business, uh, Circle K, uh, a special use permit for a liquor license at three hundred South Green Mountain Road, located in the C two heavy commercial zoning district.
Motion to approve ordinance seventy-six, sixty-four, seventy-six, seventy-two, seventy-six, seventy-three, seventy-six, seventy-four, seventy-six, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-six, seventy-eight, seventy-six, seventy-nine, and seventy-six, eighty, so.
Motion by Alderman Selsby, second by Alderman Meyer. Discussion on any of these ordinances? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Conso.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Haynes.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martenson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, I know a number of people here tonight from Lindenwood, just wanna tell you on behalf of the council, best of luck, we'll work with you, but it's exciting to see this new dorm, uh, start to come out of the ground, so we're, and they started working today again on the crime lab, so, a lot of stuff happening on, uh, South Twenty-third Street, it's pretty exciting. Okay, uh, with that unfinished business, do we have any? Yes, ma'am.
Yes. In April and May of last year, every member of this council voted in favor of installing streetlights in six oh seven South Douglas and six oh seven South Pennsylvania to the safety of citizens. As you know, from my recent FOIA request, these streetlights were never installed. When the owner of Plants and More came back to the city and this project was placed on hold, the alderman should have been notified. It is upsetting to learn that ten months after a project was approved, that no action was taken to ensure the safety of our citizens. Per an email sent last week, I have been notified that the city has scheduled an onsite meeting Wednesday at eleven a.m. I will not be able to attend this meeting because I have a full-time job. I'll assume many of the neighborhood residents also have jobs and will be unable to attend. I would hope that you take this council and the neighborhood residents concerned for the safety and account and get these streetlights installed as soon as possible. In the future, should there be any project approved by this council replaced on an indefinite hold, I would request that the appropriate committee and full council be notified. Then I have a few questions. Who gave the authorization to stop this project after committee and council approved it? Uh, it was in Streets and Grades in April, and in May for the one on South Douglas, and which we all know right after Streets and Grades, we come down and vote right away what we voted on in Streets and Grades at council meetings. How many more situations like this have been stopped? Now, this, now this is why there are so many FOIAs, which, in respect to this, I'm gonna turn in another FOIA asking, um, I would like to know if all projects approved by the Streets and Grades and City Council have been completed, and which ones, and date of approval, date of completion, and if not, why? This was before Street, the Streets and Grades Committee and Council, we should have been notified it was put on hold.
Okay, Alderman Schneider, do you need to complete your remarks?
Not yet, um, when I usually do something, you always make the comment that I'm grandstanding. Well, I'm not up for reelection this year, so who's grandstanding now?
If you give us a chance, I'll explain what I know, and you can then, with the city engineer, um, yes, this is a mistake, um, it was approved, I thought the lights were in. I just learned probably six weeks ago that the lights were not in. It, did you know the lights were not in?
No, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
We don't know anything, and yous all get upset when we send in these FOIs.
Can I finish now? You head the floor. Now, Tim Gregoritz came to me and said that the owner had contacted him, first of all, we waited for a while with the work order for Amren, and Amren takes time, okay? You might be a number of months before a work order when they get to, 'cause this was not, we, it was, it was priority, but they're all priorities, but, you know, it was, it was something that we had requested, but several months had went gone by. When, all of a sudden, when I guess they were out there marking, marking the project, Amren, the gentleman, the two owners of Plants and More called Tim, all upset, and said that if you put those lights where they have them, you're gonna put us out of business because the bright lights will kill the, the grow, uh, they have to have so much time, dormant time, I'm not a plant expert, but made sense, they had some concern about, uh, we had this before with farmers, a couple of places where we put, you know, on fields, et cetera. So, the project was halted out of a courtesy that not negatively impacted a business. Amren was supposed to get back with us right away and look at some alternatives, um, they're like every business right now today, um, they have been swamped, and when this finally came up and came to my attention, I told Tim, Amren has gotta commit, if I have to make the phone call or whatever it's gonna take, to go out there on site with us and some people and look at the alternatives. I'm the one who suggested to Tim that Amren's gonna come out during the daytime. Now, I understand, and I'm the first to realize, the average person in the neighborhood might be working during the day, but I thought by sharing the information, if a few residents could come, it's better than just meeting staff and Amren. We're gonna look at this, we're gonna resolve it, we're gonna see it through. Was there a mistake made here? I don't disagree with you, Alderman Schneider. Was it intentional? The answer is no. Um, and, and, and all I can say is if somebody knew it before we did, they should've came to me and said. I talked to Tim, we talked about tracking this in the future, about getting Amren to let us know when these things are put in and when they're not, usually we're on top of it, this one slipped through the cracks, it was an honest mistake. But, when the thing, when the, when the business didn't want to negatively impact our business, of course, we said, we still need it for safety, and Amren's coming out with us now at that date to look at some alternative locations, to see if it's feasible that we don't negatively impact Plants or More, but we can still accomplish what we had council approved, and that was public safety. I think this hopefully can be done, I apologize for any inconvenience, I didn't know until a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, I don't disagree with you, so that's what I know about the situation, okay? Anything else under unfinished business? Hearing none, miscellaneous and new business, so we can get to one of the biggest items tonight as we get moving here. Hearing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the water fuel claims in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, ninety, fifty thousand, ninety-two dollars and ten cents. Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Martenson, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Conso.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Haynes.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martenson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries, I ask for a motion, let me explain here, folks, we're gonna go into executive session for a few minutes. If you'd like to come back, and if, we're gonna have the final item on the agenda, hopefully, is gonna be a motion to consider this, uh, development agreement with the YMCA. If that's what you're here for, you can come back in and that will be discussed and open, but there are a few things, since this is about selling property and about a contract, that we're gonna go into executive session for first. So I'm asking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, contract negotiation, litigation, and property acquisition, and for the purpose of discussing price, consideration and terms of the sale of property in fifteen North Street. Motion by Alderman Conso, second by Alderman Heisler, discussion? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries, if you would please, I need a, just a few people. Officer Grantson, looks like that's it. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're back in open session, and, uh, appreciate your patience at this time. Alderman Meyer.
My, Your Honor, on behalf of the Economic Development and Administration Committee, I'd like to make a motion to include development agreement, heard our leader for the redevelopment of the property, located at fifteen North Street, with the city government services consented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Meyer, second was by Alderman Hart. Any discussion? Hold it, she's first.
I would like to thank both the city and Mr. Arnier for agreeing to consult with the Belleville Social Society in case anything is needed, should we just all have that.
He can tell us he would communicate with them, and that's, that's what we appreciate. Alderman Haynes, as John, please see this, uh, come on board, and ask, the city attorney, you're comfortable with everything in this agreement?
If you have a specific question, I'll answer that, I mean, I, I got negotiating the agreement.
But you're, you're comfortable with it, that, as far as the city's interest is concerned, that we're protected?
In what regard? I mean, if we addressed all possibilities, yeah.
That's, that's right. And you're, you're happy with this, Mayor, and the staffs? I think the staffs worked very hard, I mean, is anything perfect? Um, you know, we've all seen in life, and I've seen it in eight years I've been mayor, that there's a lot of, uh, contracts and projects that we've always found, uh, can develop that exception. So I guess if we go into it with a negative eye, we can always find something to be skeptical of. I think Mr. Arnier's been very forthright with us, uh, we certainly worked, uh, very closely with him to try to get a, a, a development agreement here tonight in front of you that we felt would work for all sides. Uh, I can't sit here and promise you that there's no scenario that couldn't arise, that, that might not be something that we totally would. But you, you're, you're comfortable with it? I'm comfortable with what we've, what we've worked out here, I believe, is, is the best win-win that I've seen in, well, the whole time I've been mayor, because even though we didn't receive the keys till the second year I was mayor, uh, I knew coming into this that this building was gonna come our way. So the whole eight years I've been mayor, it was no secret that we were getting the YMCA, the old YMCA building in fifteen North First Street, and there was never a plan, we tried, as I explained before, we advertised in historic periodicals, we advertised a couple different places for proposals, we took a number of different groups and entities through the building, but everybody either wanted the city to pay the lion's share of remodeling, and, in some cases, even the ongoing upkeep, uh, and, and that just was never, and then when we hit the, the economy bottomed out in, in, uh, late oh eight, it made it even less possible that we could entertain those types of considerations. I think what we have here tonight, uh, is an opportunity to save a building that many people were concerned about seeing destroyed, I never disagreed with that, to bring, initially, when it's, when it's, the first phase is up and remodeled, thirty-six jobs downtown, to put the property for the first time probably ever on the property tax rolls, and to even create a little bit of sales tax. Uh, with all those things in mind, if everything goes as planned, it should be a dynamite deal for Belleville. Like I said, I don't have a crystal ball, nobody predicted that the bottom, bottom would fall out of the stock market like it did in oh eight, as badly as it did, et cetera, I can't predict what Kurt might run into, but I think based on what we've exercised here in, in working this out, and I really wanna applaud Emily, and, and Eric's not here tonight, his grandfather was buried today, but there, Emily's office did a great job working with my office and with Kurt, in, in trying to work through all the hurdle obstacles that we possibly could think about.